Counselor Gonzalez?
Well, this is only referencing one of the companies that actually had the money to do this.
Counselor Cal?
My opinion, I think any satellite provider has the money to do this, but I think their money for doing this should be pet- to better use to make the existing customers happy, other than the ones that have passed and the ones, few that have satellite issue problems, looking at them going down the street.
Counselor Gonzalez?
It can satisfy the existing customers because in order for the existing customers to enjoy their TV and their service, the private company can actually improve their system by actually taking away the old satellites which is not even used.
Counselor Tran?
Okay, I feel that as counselor at large, I feel like we should speak on behalf of the city rather than ourselves. And that being said, I feel like this ordinance in itself would not really attract most of the city as, you know, like something practical.
Counselor Cal?
Second that.
Any further discussion? Clerk, roll call.
This is for the original motion. Counselor Guo. Counselor Guo. Counselor Bowie?
No.
Counselor Cole?
No.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
No.
Counselor Lee?
I abstain.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
No.
Counselor Tran?
I abstain.
Counselor Worthy Lake?
Yes.
Four yeses, motion fails. Before we move on to the next order, I'd like to thank Senator Gonzalez for bringing up the issue because it's a very debatable issue, but obviously no use. Clerk, please read the next issue. All right, Mr. President. All right, Counselor Newton recommends that all youth groups requesting canning privileges be required to provide community services by cleaning up the city parks and playgrounds under the direction of the Department of Public Works. Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Tran?
I'd like to propose a friendly amendment. Uh, I feel that uh, youth groups, it could really apply to like younger groups like little league, and I feel like they should be required to have parental permission too. Instead of the direction of the Department of Public Works, they should be, like, they have permission from their parents.
Uh, anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Roll call? Oh. Counselor Kirkios?
Is that for, um, like, to do the community service or to do the canning?
Uh, really just you both, I think both.
That's Counselor Newton. Any? Uh, any other further discussion? Counselor Snyder?
Um, I agree with that because, uh, if, um, like, for instance, there are, uh, she was saying, like, little leaguers, if they're cleaning up, um, something like the parks, they can be, um, sometimes they can be dirty and it could be like, um, it could be like syringes or stuff they get hurt themselves on, so they need, uh, be careful, they need, uh, permission of their parents to do so.
Counselor Tran?
I also agree with that and I absolutely like to add to my amendment proposal and say that they should, during their canning and their community service, they should be supervised as they're doing this.
Any further discussion? Counsel, clerk, roll call? This is on the amendment. This is for the amendment, um, Counselor Will?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran? Counselor Tran?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes.
Counselor Worthy Lake?
Yes.
Amendment passed, one yes. Any further discussion on the original proposal? Counselor Worthy Lake?
Uh, proposal for another friendly amendment. Um, if it were to be a winter sport for them to either have to do community service as a shovel rather than cleaning something up, or to stand, or they would have to, um, agree to doing a spring cleanup once snowbeds cleared up and once playgrounds are able to be used again.
And anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Will?
Um, I saw something that you mentioned, will there be other ways that they can, um, repay the community for their donations? Um, I'd like to say that these youth groups also, um, according to Counselor Tran's proposed amendment, that this also includes little leaguers and I kind of can't imagine a little kid shoveling tons of snow, actually. That's all kind of canceling.
Counselor Worthy Lake?
Um, in that case, that would be like buying, um, a great amount of a spring cleanup and doing that, because obviously you're not gonna make an eight-year-old shovel that's just unlawful. But they could, in the spring, they could clean up the park, get their, if it was a little leaguer, get their baseball field ready in that sense. So anything that applies to the age group, I guess, would be better.
Any further discussion? Counselor Bowie?
Um, the previous amendment, didn't the previous amendment say that, um, the little leaguers, they don't have to, like, um, clean up the parks themselves?
The original amendment was on supervision, they clean up. Counselor? Counselor?
Um, this is like more for junior high and middle school days, not so much like little.
Yeah.
And that's what their amendment was about, they want to add the little leaguers, and that passed. Yeah, well, this is for the winter one, for this is on athletes who join community service in the winter and spring, I mean, yeah, in the winter and spring for the community service. We have not yet just the original, uh, ordinance. Any further discussion on the amendment to allow winter sports to either do shoveling or postpone their cleanup till spring? Clerk, roll call? For the second amendment, Counselor Guo?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton? Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Counselor Worthy Lake?
Yes.
Eleven yeses, amendment passed. Any further discussion on the original ordinance to allow youth, I mean, to quote, recommending youth groups do, uh, community service to repay back their community on canning? Roll call? Oh, sorry, Counselor Tran?
Uh, just a quick question for Counselor Newton. Uh, by youth groups, I, I feel like you're extending it all the way to like elementary school kids, uh, is that correct?
Um, not so much elementary school, like first, second grade, but I don't know, I'd say like starting around twelve, thirteen, I think that's old enough to shovel or clean up a park.
Any further questions? Clerk, Counselor? Roll call? Um, for the original ordinance, Counselor Guo?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
Yes.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
Yes.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Counselor Worthy?
Yes.
Eleven yeses, motion passes. Next order of business, clerk. Counselor Snyder recommends that the city contact the banks and mortgage companies that own vacant properties after one year to work with the city to repair the property in order that the city can sell the property to recoup any of the city's losses.
I agree with this amendment, uh, I'm sorry, I agree with this, uh, recommendation because, um, uh, vacant properties can lower the, um, the, uh, neighborhood properties, uh, the value of them, and it can be detrimental to the city. And I believe that, um, if we were to repair them and, um, try and make them a little more, uh, aesthetic, it will, um, help raise, uh, property values for neighborhoods without buildings. Also, um, vacant buildings can often be places where, like, uh, the homeless can sleep or teenagers can go to have parties or, uh, do illegal things. And, uh, it's very dangerous if there are fires because, um, firefighters don't actually know who or what is in the building, so it puts their lives at risk.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Tran?
Well, I, I agree with the overall concept of it and I do agree with the whole housing situation. I feel like the wording of this ordinance is very contradictory. You're requesting that bank, like, vacant properties owned by banks and mortgage companies sell their property on behalf of the city, which is, I don't understand that because you're selling property that does not belong to the city.
Any further discussion?
Um, I believe that, uh, the, I don't think it's on the behalf of the city, I think it's, um, the city and the banks work out a deal that they're able to negotiate, like, um, what the, uh, the price could be for the property.
Any further discussion? Counselor Tran?
Is that to sell it to the city so the city can, so the city can sell it themselves, or? I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Is it that the banks and mortgage companies that own the properties work with the city so that later the city can buy it and then sell it again?
Um, no, it's so that, um, the city and the banks and the mortgage companies work together so that it can be sold to, um, individuals and the city and the banks and the mortgages work out a deal where, um, the banks and the mortgages will be able to essentially, um, put it back into the system, the, the, the property, and then in turn, um, it'll help the property values for existing inhabitants.
Any further discussion? Counselor Tran?
Uh, by working with these companies, are you suggesting that we will be using city funding for this?
Counselor Snyder?
Um, yes, I would assume so, I, I would assume that we would use, um, certain funds that would be, uh, proper to allocate to this, uh, particular issue.
Any further discussion? Counselor Worthy Lake?
Um, I'd like to ask the city solicitor a question.
Still here. What was your question?
By law, can you require, excuse me, a bank to, to, to like, to buy, to like, buy their property if the bank proposes on a deal to ban it, can you require them to do that?
We have an ordinance already in the city requiring the bank all properties, that they, they require them to maintain the properties. We can't compel them to sell the properties, but we can certainly require them, uh, under the code enforcement regulations that we have to maintain the property, keep it in good repair, keep it, uh, free from trespasses, keep it, uh, uh, sealed from the weather and to maintain the properties. As far as, uh, ordering them to do certain things, I mean, they, they are owners of the property, so you can do that, a kind of regulation in terms of, uh, physical structure, right, in terms of compelling them to sell a property. We don't have the right to do that. Counselor Snyder?
Um, this recommendation doesn't say that we're compelling the banks or the mortgage companies to, uh, sell the property. It, um, it explicitly says that, uh, the city will work out a deal for contacting the banks so that we may, uh, negotiate with them, not force them to.
Any further discussion? Counselor Gonzalez?
I strongly agree with Counselor Snyder and I applaud Frank Hart.
Counselor Tran?
Uh, I'm curious as to find out where, from which, uh, city funding do you plan to, you know, use to allocate it?
Counselor Snyder?
Counselor Seer, uh, said to me that, um, I believe we can use the, uh, the neighborhood fund. Uh, he said to me very briefly when we had to go through it financially, but I believe that's where we could, or we could possibly use the, um, reserve funds of the city.
Any further discussion? Clerk, roll call? This is for the original ordinance. Counselor Guo?
I abstain.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
I abstain.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
Yes.
Counselor Lee?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Counselor Worthy?
Yes.
Motion passes with, one yes. Next order of business? Counselor Stanton recommends that the director of the parks and recreation program work in conjunction with, uh, Lynn Police Department to include presentation, a presentation on a bullying in parks and recreation summer program. Anybody else? Counselor Stanton?
I mean, I feel this is like a good idea for the kids to have, like, a presentation like this because now all the kids are exposed to bullying and some kids don't even know what bullying is, some kids crack jokes and don't even know that they're bullying a kid, so I, I feel that even though, like, some schools even give this presentation, it'll be good at the parks because there's a lot of kids that attend these park recreations and then, then again, if we have this at the parks, you don't have to worry about a lot of kids being exposed to groups or anything, like, for example, like, like how we are now in high school, like, you have your park with the kids and all your other kids and, like, bring them all together as one basically.
Anybody second that?
Second, I second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Kirkios?
Um, I think that this, um, this proposal, while it's like a good idea in general, um, I think that for the parks program specifically, I don't think that it would be, um, it would really work because the parks program, um, kids are allowed to sort of, well, they're not supposed to, but they're sort of allowed to, like, go home at certain times. And I think that if the kids get this presentation, it was gonna happen on a certain day, any presentation, they might think, I don't wanna hear, like, a presentation for the summer where they're playing games, they might not actually show up with the program that day, so I'm just not sure how feasible it would actually be because unless you're like giving out, like, free water bottles, random questions, stuff like that, it might not actually work.
Any further discussion? Counselor Worthy Lake?
Motion to table to bring to the school committee, I feel it's in our hands to be able to deal with this, I feel like it's more the school committee because they deal with the children more than us.
Clerk, roll call? Motion to table? Counselor Guo?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
No.
Counselor Cole?
No.
Counselor Gonzalez?
No.
Counselor Kirkios?
No.
Counselor Lynn?
No.
Counselor Newton?
No.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
No.
Counselor Worthy?
Yes.
Four yeses, motion to table passed, bring failed, sorry. Any further discussion? Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes, I would like to make a friendly amendment to include topics such as public health reviews or some incentives for children during the summer program, not just only having a presentation for, about bullying during the summer program, but also to include different topics throughout the summer. So now that the children can also be, um, known about other topics as well, not just bullying.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Worthy?
Um, I feel, in these park and recreation groups, um, most of the children that go are fairly young and I feel that, um, drugs and health and things like that shouldn't be talked about around, like, an eight or a nine-year-old, which a majority of the children are.
Counselor Kirkios?
Um, I agree that this is voluntary, this is at school, um, the kids are not required to be there and it's in the middle, think about it, this is in the middle of summer, like, kids are there to have fun, they're not really there, you're, you're in school all year to create presentations and I think there are plenty of presentations in school and it's fairly opportunistic to do that in school and the fact that this is a short, this is like a five-week-long summer program, um, I don't think we should even barter them with educational things, whether they're just there to have fun, have a good time. And I guess she said, they're young and they're not gonna wanna sit there in the middle of summer and listen to presentations, even if there are water bottles, so I disagree.
Any further discussion? Counselor Snyder?
I believe we, um, should, uh, expose them to the truths about drugs because, um, uh, even though it is used often, uh, it is often talked about in school, it can be really, um, pretty much beneficial to the, uh, to the child because they need to know that, uh, it, it does have, um, substantial, like, uh, problems and side effects. Uh, I don't think many people are aware of the, um, addictions of drugs or stuff like that.
Any further discussion? Counselor Newton?
Uh, I like this idea, I think that it should happen, I don't really consider bullying an educational thing, I think it's a topic that everyone should be, um, educated on, not, like, not necessarily make it so it's a presentation, like, you know, a boring one, but get the kids involved in, um, just make it, no bullying's an ongoing problem and I don't think that you can hear it too much, it's, I don't think anything bad would come out of it.
Any further discussion on the friendly amendment? Counselor Tran?
Well, I feel like there's no real, like, physical con to this at all, I think if anything, the only con is boring them to death and that's, like, no reason not to give a presentation on something so important.
And for this, Counselor Kirkios? Counselor?
I think that there's plenty of other cons because, um, I work with kids aged about, like, eight to fourteen at, um, my job and I think a lot of times the presentations we try to give them, they'll not show up on the day they'll give their presentation because they don't wanna hear the, like, it's not a school program, they just, sometimes they just don't, they don't want another presentation that's like school, so there's that comment, they just would not show up that day and then you'd have people giving presentations to, like, three kids.
Any further, Counselor Newton?
Uh, well, then I think those three kids should have to be able to listen to it and it's, I mean, it is a choice if they don't wanna see the presentation, they skip that day, but for the kids that are there, I don't think that they should be not, like, I don't think they should not have the chance to see it just because other kids didn't show up.
Any further discussion on the amendment? Counselor Gonzalez?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, I would just like to say, why continue with presentations? We can do different activities in order to discuss about these topics, not just the presentation. We can even make the kids themselves talk about it if they actually know so much about the topic and it's going through the school system all the time. So the students themselves can actually do it and present it to us and see how much they are well-informed about the topic. And it doesn't have to be presentation, it doesn't have to be so educational as our colleagues say, but we can also do it as an activity or funny games.
Counselor Kirkios?
I, I agree, I mean, I think that, um, we can talk about it, but I don't, I mean, it is used in this word and it does say presentations and, um, I think that convertance changed that, but really changed that, not just kind of say, oh, we're doing an A activity. I think that it's, it definitely is an idea, I just, I think the big question came is do we want students not coming? Or do we want, you know, if you say, okay, there's not gonna be a presentation around, there's gonna be an activity around, maybe that went up, so I think that's better.
Any further on the amendment? Roll call? Um, on the first amendment to include presentations of the bullying, Counselor Guo?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
I abstain.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counselor Kirkios?
No.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Counselor Worthy?
No.
One yes. Roll call on the original ordinance to include a bullying presentation during the park and recreational summer program. Um, the original ordinance? Counselor Guo?
Yes.
Counselor Bowie?
Yes.
Counselor Cole?
No.
Counselor Gonzalez?
Yes.
Counsel, Counselor Kirkios?
No.
Counselor Lynn?
Yes.
Counselor Newton?
Yes.
Counselor Snyder?
Yes.
Counselor Stanton?
Yes.
Counselor Tran?
Yes.
Counselor Worthy?
No.
On to the next order of business? Eight. Um, Counsel, Counselor Lynn recommends that the Lynn Schools Department look into the feasibility of opening the school gyms after school for students. Counselor Lynn?
Um, I agree with this, I really think it is a good idea and I honestly believe that students, um, will definitely take advantage of this opportunity and it will reduce, um, at least to some degree, uh, the obesity problem that is sweeping the nation, I suppose. And, um, I believe it's important to encourage students to stay active and, um, possibly get involved with other students, maybe through interactions after the gym.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counselor Worthy?
Um, I just feel that it will keep kids out of trouble, I mean, give them something to do, they're not gonna do anything bad because most, I feel like most kids, boys exactly, more specifically, if you told them there was gonna be a pickup basketball game or pickup football game, something like that, they probably wouldn't do that than just walk from the streets, they'd be doing something better with their talent.
Any further discussion? Counselor Lynn, can you please come up? Quick friendly amendment that we add before school as well as after school.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Counselor Cole?
Um, just gives them more time, less, uh, time on the streets. I think everybody gets right there.
Uh, any further discussion on the amendment? Clerk, roll call on the amendment? Oh, uh, sorry, Counselor Tran?
Well, you know, just from personal experience too, it's, look, when I was in sixth grade, I used to go to breathe, which didn't allow you into the building for seven didn't allow you into the building before seven thirty or seven fifteen for breakfast, so I was there at six forty-five in the morning every day in the winter. Absolutely nothing to do, freezing, and they have nothing available to me and we're freezing, let me in. So what I would do is take a walk around, so I, I think being open in the morning would be a good idea.
Any further discussion? Clerk Roco.
This is for first amendment for before school as well as after school, talk in gym. Counsel Adwell.
Yes.
Counsel Booley.
Yes.
Counsel Cole.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Kirkfield.
Yes.
Counsel Ellen.
Yes.
Counsel Newton.
Yes.
Counsel Snyder.
Yes.
Counsel Stanton.
Yes.
Counsel Tran.
Yes.
Um, on the main motion, clerk.
Counsel Worthy Lake.
Yes.
Eleven yeses.
Um, on the main motion, clerk, Roco.
Counsel Adwell.
Yes.
Counsel Booley.
Yes.
Counsel Cole.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Kirkfield.
Yes.
Counsel Ellen.
Yes.
Counsel Newton.
Yes.
Counsel Snyder.
Yes.
Counsel Stanton.
Yes.
Counsel Tran.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy Lake.
Yes.
One yeses, motion passes. Next order of business. Counsel Booley recommends all students in the Lynn College Schools be required to wear their school name on their shirts. Counsel Booley.
Um, I disagree with this because, um, we're, we're, we are already wearing lanyards in the school and I don't think it's necessary to wear our school names on our shirts.
Is there a motion to deny?
Yes.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Counsel Worthy Lake.
Um, I just, we already did that, if I, if I can deny the uniform, correct?
Yes.
Yes, we did.
So, we can't, there's no way to pass this if you deny the uniform.
Any further discussion? Remember, this is a motion to deny. Clerk Roco.
Counsel Adwell.
Yes.
Counsel Booley.
Yes.
Counsel Cole.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel, Counsel Kirkfield.
Yep.
Counsel Ellen.
Yes.
Counsel Newton.
Yes.
Counsel Snyder.
Yes.
Counsel Stanton.
Yes.
Counsel Tran.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy Lake.
Yes.
Eleven yeses to deny this ordinance.
Next order of business. City clerk.
Counsel Worthy Lake requires that any nonprofit seeking community development funding that is required be properly and lawfully registered and up to date with filling requirements, filing requirements, um, of the Secretary of State Office and Attorney General's Office.
Counsel Worthy Lake.
Um, I agree with this because if some, if a nonprofit has to keep up with filling out requirements, then the people can know what their tax money is going to. And if they know what their tax money is going to, they'll be less, they'll be more glad that it's going to a good program that could potentially help them. And if the nonprofit was not up to date on their requirements, the, the residents of the city can find out very quickly and they would know any changes and their money would be used more wisely as opposed to it going to a scale of the nonprofit.
Anybody second that?
Second.
Any further discussion? Clerk Roco.
Um, Counsel Adwell.
Yes.
Counsel Booley.
Yes.
Counsel Cole.
Yes.
Counsel Gonzalez.
Yes.
Counsel Kirkfield.
Yes.
Counsel Ellen.
Yes.
Counsel Newton.
Yes.
Counsel Snyder.
Yes.
Counsel Stanton.
Yes.
Counsel Tran.
Yes.
Counsel Worthy Lake.
Yes.
Eleven yeses, motion passed.
Counselor, I'd like to have a key word.
I just wanna commend you guys for the job you did tonight, it's very spirit and debate, you're all gonna be very good citizens and live, you get bright futures. I wanna commend you.
Motion to adjourn, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody deny? Leading adjourn.